All right folks, we're five minutes late starting. I take responsibility for that.
How are you?
Good, good.
We'll get back in there for chair. Hers is sleepy.
All right ladies and gentlemen, if you would please, we're five minutes late. And I take responsibility for the first five. Second pile, officers. If you would please, we'll go ahead and call this, uh, meeting of the Grand County Work Commissioners here on the April 26th, 2013, the order. Uh, we'll give the invitation tonight, and I would ask the Commission of Orders to lead us to the place of leisure. Stand please. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for the day. We thank you for the blessings we've received in it. We ask, Lord, we gather here together to be about the people's business, that you just guide and direct us, compass, Lord, in the decisions to be made. Thank you for those, Lord, who have an interest in what takes place in our, in our small community that is so blessed. Help us, Lord, guide us, direct us. Be with those this hour, Lord, that are in hardship and challenge. Those that are in Boston, those that are serving our country. Lord, those we find are in harm's way. Now, Lord, we just ask your continued blessing. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Have pleasantries to the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. It's good to see Commissioner Williams. Hasn't seen about as much as I'm used to. Good seeing you, Commissioner. Um, I'd like to ask now if we have a motion for the approval of the agenda. And I understand from the clerk that we do have revisions. If you'd like to go ahead and make those for us.
Under Finance Report Number Six, we need to add Finance's new software
Okay.
with a possible action. Um, and then under our action items, we need to add a water line installation by Williams Construction for $1,000.
And where's this going, Ms. Clark?
This will be under eleven, under A- Action Items.
Water line?
Mm-hmm. To Williams Construction for $1,000.
Okay.
We need, uh, we will accept the CDBG funds that were given to the county, uh, $225,000.
Scatter, I, scatter.
Scatter side, mm-hmm.
And those are the action items?
And the outside of the building approval, we will let you look at the proposed, uh, senior building, how the layout is going to be on the outside, which involves some rock, and you'll make a decision whether it, which kind of rock will bring that up. And that was a recommendation by the Senior Citizens Committee. And then permission for Andy to travel on May the 10th to receive a part of credit for our recreation.
Okay. Ms. Clark, I do ask if you can be straight on the things of discussion items and action. Does everyone understand the additions to the agenda? Are there any other additions that you may, revisions?
I know it's, uh, generally that you've already had prior, but I'd like to take this meeting for Tom and Jan and Sammy. He worked very busy for us three years, and he actually worked on that.
Oh, I did not know that.
So.
We'd like to have a minute of silence with the cutting hand down. Thank you, folks. Let's be remembering now. Thank you for sharing your time. Pardon me, have any other changes? If not, we hear a motion to be approved of the, uh, agenda.
So moved.
We have a second. All right, any further discussion? All approved, signature by the flip of the hand, all taken, and with security. This time I'd like to recognize, uh, Ms. Rebecca Garland for our finding. Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Garland. Thank you, Breach. I have a motion that we approve the minutes of the workshop meeting and the regular meeting of 3/18/2013. Let's have a second. Any discussion? All approved, signature by the hand, all votes like signs. Thank you, Commissioner Moore. This time we recognize Ms. Garland.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. I've got several things on my agenda, um, so I'm trying to talk as quickly as I can, but stop me if you've got questions. Um, we do have our regular finance report or financial highlights, um, through today. Our ending cash balance in the general fund checking account for March 31st, we're at Uh, we did drop below the $5 million mark, which I knew we would. It was nice while it lasted. Um, but we are about $320,000 or $30,000 ahead of what our cash balance was this time last year, so I'm still very pleased with that progress that we've made. Um, as you know, that we are in the middle of the slide downhill, okay? But we still are looking fairly good in the, in the books. Um, we had tax collections for the month of March, uh, real property taxes current year were $72,757. Prior year taxes collected were $11,122. Uh, we have sent out garnishment and debt set-off notices, so people, um, we had a few residents who did not get their state, or all of their state tax refunds because of that process. Uh, the total taxes for real property were $83,879 collected. That's slightly below last year, what we collected, but when we flip the page here in a minute, we'll see we're still ahead of what we collected for the year in total. Our DMV taxes collected for March were $32,256. You'll flip two pages to page four, where you'll see more yellow on the page. You'll see that our total real property taxes through the month of March were $4,996,194. This time last year in real taxes, we had collected $4,958,000, so we're tracking about $38,000 ahead in our tax collections. And as I always do, I always thank the residents of Grand County for their faithfulness to their county. DMV collections, we're still ahead. This time last year was $1,606,000, and we are beginning the process of rolling out House Bill 1779. I think the first batch of information will be coming down, probably already has come down this month. So we'll be seeing beginning in July 1, that system go into place, and you will probably, we, we, we should be seeing for current year taxes from this point forward, 100% collection rate on, on DMV taxes. Um, our collection rate for real property taxes is at 95.9% of our levy, and this time last year is at 92.55%. So once again, part of that is because our total levy decreased somewhat la- this, this fiscal year due to conservation needs and, and present use value and things like that. So I, it is a function of the fact that we've done better in our collections, plus the levy went down. As we always like to try to explain all these variances so that we all understand. If you flip to page five, our total revenues for the month were $834,922. Our expenditures were $1,262,313, which put us in a deficit of $427,391 for the month. Now, we had some fairly large expenditures last month. One of them was, we put a new ambulance online. That was about a $90,000 expenditure. That will be finance fact. We're just waiting on, I think we're waiting on one police cruiser to my right, Mr. Cable, and one, I think the sheriff's vehicle to come in, and then I'll be rolling out that financing, so you'll see your revenue rebounded by that, that money back into the general fund. We also paid out about $79,000 in sanitation debt. That is only, uh, we paid the transfer station payment, and then we also made the payment on the new sanitation track we got last year. So that's one reason that our expenditures went up. We also, um, are int- we're still waiting on the state of North Carolina to reimburse us about $330,000 for this, the transit facility, which is waiting on the paper case for that money to come in, so you'll, I'm hoping by the end of the year, all that money's gonna have rolled back into the general fund, and hopefully we'll be able to maintain somewhat a surplus. Our total surplus, if you flip to page six, at this point, is still $2,132,251. I'd love to keep it, but we have our school bond payment coming in. That's gonna be about a hun- or let's see, excuse me, $240,000 that'll be going out at the middle of June, and we have some other pretty large expenditures out, so you'll see, it's, it's gonna look like a bloodbath. I don't put the numbers in red just because it looks too painful, but, but it'll look like a little bit of a bloodbath for the next few months as we, as we, uh, go through, uh, trying to end up the year. Our prior year, um, surplus was $2,087,000, so we're still tracking somewhat ahead. Um, if you flip to page seven, you'll see that our collections on sales tax, we just got these in a few days ago, were $104,754, and we are still a lit- we're running quite a bit ahead of, this is the first year since I've been here that we've had a positive difference. We are tracking ahead $76,000 in sales tax, which helps to make that school bond payment. Um, so I'm, I'm very, very thankful for that. Okay, I'm gonna, any questions on that? Hey, I, I've got your budget analysis department, and I, I'm sorry, I, sometimes I blip, I forget, I get phone calls and I forget to change dates. It should be through March 31st. I just realized I had that type of. Um, so far, we have, almost all of our departments are staying well within budget. We do have a few that are, that I'm anticipating, we opened just a tad, but I have very good reasons for that. Um, you'll notice, as, as we talked earlier, the election was gonna go slightly over, but we kind of knew that, um, we had extra expenses, because we had to have that extra primary, uh, registered deeds looks a little over, but that's just because the Alcoa sale created more expenditures in that department. I've done more budget amendments, and I think it wasn't quite enough. Our jail budget's going over, that's because we've had a tremendous amount of inmate medical expense, and from what Mr. Cable's telling me, I'm, I'm thinking the General Assembly's gonna give us some help on that this next year, so we're really hopeful that that legislation's gonna pass, it's gonna contain some of these medical costs. Um, the health department's running a little hot, but, um, they are actually running out a surplus right now. Overall, when you look at the department, they're running at about a $70,000 surplus, so they're, they're more than covering their, their budget. And of course, recreation's running a little over, just because we had, um, to do some work on the helmets for football, we gotta keep our kids safe, but the, the pool budget's looking well under budget, so I'm thinking that's gonna take care of that. Um, if I look at it as holistically, uh, at this point in the game, we should have expended 75% of the budget. Right now, we've expended 70%, so overall, we're, we're hanging right in there, uh, and where we need to be or where we anticipated we were gonna be a year ago. So, so far, overall, we're doing, we're doing okay. I, as, and I met with the department managers a week and a half ago, or last week, I guess it's a week and a half ago, to go over some of the budget items, went over, of course, they get their budget reports every month, um, and I just, you know, I reiterated, we gotta hold the line, we're doing okay, but we got a lot of big things coming out, we gotta hold the line, so everybody's well on board, they understand where we're at, they, they understand where we've been, and they don't, uh, they're, they're being loyal to the cause. We'll just leave it at that. Any questions? The next thing on my agenda is, um, authorization for federal drug tax bank account. Um, we have, the sheriff's department, when they make drug arrests and drug busts, then they're able to make an application to both, if, if it's a federal, uh, or state bust, then they're able to make application back to either government agency to get some money back into the county. And it's looking like, we, we opened a state drug account about a year ago, it looks like there may be some money coming down the pipeline for the feds, so I need to open a federal drug tax account. The, these are accounts that get closed after every sheriff's term, um, 'cause we don't want any overlap between administrations, so I'm happy to report we get to open another bank account. It's looking really promising, that we'll have some money coming in for their, their needs. So I've got that, I think, um, it'll need to be an action item when I get finished. The next item on my agenda is something that I have craved to be able to do for four, almost four years, um, and that is to have a little bit of extra cash in the bank account to be able to invest to get a little bit better rate. Um, right now, we make about .1% per annum on our money in our bank account, so that's not a whole lot. Um, we are able, we have a capacity to shift some funds short-term, and what I mean is, I can leave it in there from three months forward to the, that North Carolina Capital Management Trust Fund. They, actually, they've been real honest with me, as they've come and visited with me over the last four years, and they've said, we can't do any better than the banks, but actually, at this point, they're able to do a little better than the banks, .14%. It's not a lot, it's pennies, but I'm not doing my job effectively if I'm not trying to make as much money on our money as I can. What this is, is a, it's a bond portfolio, it works like a money, uh, money market account. Um, you have a 24-hour turnaround if you need to put the money back into the checking account. I don't wanna put, but probably about a half a million dollars in there to start, uh, because I know we have a lot of big expenditures to make, but I would like to be able to move that just to make a few more pennies, um, at, at, at some point in time.
How is that insured, Beth?
It's, it's, um, it's invested, it's not FDIC, okay? But it's invested in North Carolina municipal bonds. Now, the reason that I'm okay with this is that I know that North Carolina has the local government commission, and before you can issue a bond, directly issue in North Carolina, you have to prove to the local government commission that you are sound. So if you have, if we have our money in North Carolina municipals, it's, it's nearly as safe as being FDIC. Now, we're not technically under FDIC rules, we're not as a ca- as a county. We are under what they call the pooling method of collateralization, which means that the state of North Carolina pretty much guarantees our deposits. Um, and so what we have to do is look for banks that are under the pooling method, so that the state of North Carolina collateralizes it. The Department of the Treasury does. Um, North Carolina Cash Management, or Capital Management Trust is the only vehicle that really the local government commission approves of for us to put our money in them. So if they have their approval, then we know that they are sound. Um, I don't expect any action tonight unless you wanna give it, but I would like for you to take this and read through it, and then if, uh, and if you would like, we can have their representative come and meet with them, just to go over what their requirements are and how they ensure that we're sa- you know, that we, they remain sound, so that we remain sound. But I think, and I'm excited to be able to actually throw this out, that it's time that we do start taking a few of our cash reserves and shifting it for the benefit of the people. And even though we may only get a few dollars a month extra in interest, that's a few dollars more than we're getting. Um, and once again, I don't wanna put a lot in there, but I think it'd be nice to put a little. So that's just something for education.
Is this on the fixed rate?
Um, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna move with the interest rates, you know, because i- if, if interest rates go up, obviously, we would get a better return. If they go down, and if they go lower than what our current banker is doing, then we'll shift it back.
Can you cap, can you cap the mortgage?
Um, I don't think you can, I think not, which is, and that's one reason that Mr. Porter, who would come and say to me, would say, Becky, even if you had any money, I wouldn't advise him to put it in, because at one point it was, they were below what the banks were.
At the turn that, you said there's a 24-hour turnaround?
It's 24-hour turnaround to get the money back if we need it for an emergency. And that's why I would never put a bunch in there. I would put, I would just take what I would call my gravy and put it in there and leave my operating room in the bank. Okay. Any other questions? We have a couple of, of areas that we need to get some approval on for some equipment. Um, the first is for the sheriff's department. If you recall back in 2010, all of their computers were destroyed, totally destroyed. We were able to get some loaners from the Sheriff's Association, and we were able, with the insurance money, to be able to buy about five computers. They are shy about five computers, okay? Um, and the area that they're really in, in the most desperate need is that the computers that they have do not have the amount of processing ability that they need to process pictures and do, you know, download a lot of these things, yeah, for investigations. Um, the sheriff's department, at this point, is running within budget. Jail's a different story, the sheriff's department's running within budget overall. Um, and so we, uh, they came to, to our office and asked if they possibly could see about getting some what they call 64-bit machines, and those are just computers that are able to process all this high-tech stuff, and they've asked for five of them, and the cost of those files before sales tax is $3,595. That total is above my standard, so, uh, and plus, being transparent, I just always wanted to make sure you folks know exactly what we're doing, but they would like to be able to purchase these computers to be able to ensure that they've got enough equipment to, to keep the, keep the department going, and everybody, every deputy that's, that's on duty can have one that, that works efficiently. I have talked with Taylor character at length, and, um, he and I, I mean, I basically said to him, anytime we buy a computer from here on out, if it costs more, you know, like a hundred, an extra hundred bucks to get the higher processor, and it's gonna extend the life of that computer, then in a couple of years, pay the extra hundred bucks. So that's why I had him go ahead and quote it for the, the higher speed. So things will last three or four years, and then we won't be coming back in two years needing better equipment.
So Taylor, Taylor has looked at these machines?
Yes. Mm-hmm. And this is what he has recommended that we carry them for several years.
I really think that if the sheriff had the money in his budget, uh, till he goes over his budget, I don't say that we have any control of this. He, he's got a budget to work with, and if he's got the money in there, I, I, my personal self, I think the computers ought to have been ordered when Taylor's at, they're shot.
So we got that $3,000 already?
One, yes.
One thousand, I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
That's up to you, give me that directive, because I'm happy to do what you guys want me to do. And, and, you know, I mean, I-
Bernie's been, he's grown on for five or six weeks whenever they need, and, uh, I know the life they need and, and stuff, and till he goes over his budget, I, I don't predict that we should interfere when he goes over, then it's a different ballgame.
But people tend to go over the budgets, though. And you know, I, I'm, I'm still one, and I completely agree with you, it needs to be done when it needs to be done, but we need to make sure it goes through. What's the Budget Control Act? They have to go through the budget.
Well, that's, that's the rub, and that, and I, I come with him and his chief deputy a time or two, and I say, you know, it's not, I can't help it.
Right.
I have to, you know, they're under the Fiscal Control Act, just like any other government, even though he's elected, and-
There's statutes.
And, and, you know, I have verified that in local committee, government commission several times, just to make sure I'm not overstating my authority, but if you give me the directive that, and Mr. Cable directed, that we can have that discretion, then, you know, I, I know that we won't let it go over budget, um, but I need the directive from the board.
But yeah, I think that's a good idea, but the thing of it is, it's still not going through the finances.
Right.
I mean, it's just not any way that you just go out and spend $10,000, $15,000, say here, well, you're shot, and then the county's gonna have to make it up. We do not want to get into that deal.
It is, it's all about you.
And you know, it's not just the sheriff's department, it's any other department in the government branch, can it?
But I'm all for, you know, if, if, because I have, you know, we've been able to deal with a good working relationship with them, and when they come to me, I mean, I know that the Sheriff Anderson or Deputy Chris comes to me with a requisition, they, especially, I mean, I know Deputy Chris really works really hard with, uh, the sheriff, I know that they've pretty well searched out what the best price is and what they need to do, and I'm comfortable with it, and I just need the directive from the board to say, as long as they're within budget, um, and we feel okay, and the four of us combined feel okay that we can spend money. It would sure make my life stand.
That does make sense, right? How long will it take you?
Probably about three days.
It won't be long.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're talking about two different, uh, actions there, right? Of approval of this brought forth tonight, and then be able to go and top off that limit. Now, is that for every department, is this the sheriff's department?
I, I, I think what, if, if they've done the expenditure that they need made quickly, then we should tell them, we're not afraid, everybody can understand what's going on. Yeah, I think, I think, I would just quickly, that's, that's-
But either way, we have to look at it like we are, I mean, that's, that's the difference, the handle of-
But then they need something quick, but we need that.
Yeah, okay. All right, is there any other discussion about that at this juncture? Okay. You have two other items here?
I do. Um, you're gonna hear me say something tonight, probably I'm gonna hear me say, well, you probably haven't heard me say it before, and, and then you may not hear me say it again for a long time. I got two more items I'm gonna ask you to spend some money. First is on 911. Now, if you recall, we've been in the steal of nominated funds for about-
Been what?
Two years, 911.
Did you say stealing?
No. I said spend.
Oh, thank you.
You, as you're aware, 911 money is restricted money. You have to spend it only on specific items, and because of the environment we fall under now, um, if you don't spend it, you lose it.
That's right.
Okay? So I wanna, I wanna wow you with a couple of items. First thing-
I, I think that's a huge of the state to, to do that.
I agree. I want that on the record.
I just want to put that there, love. And I know you do, too.
Let's put it on the record.
No, no, but-
There's some military men sitting here, aren't there? You ever see them go to redistribution and marketing and run over with a dozer? You know what I'm talking about, don't you? They get rid of it so they can earn some more the next year. Thank you.
Okay, right now, 911 account has about $151,000, and we need to spend some money by the end of the year, otherwise, we lost about, we, we spent some money last year, and we, but we still lost about a thousand bucks a month. We hadn't spent that money last year, it would have been $4,000 or $5,000 a month, so, you know, why didn't we did what we did? There is a new system that can be tacked on in the existing 911 system. You'll see this quote from Priority Dispatch, and misty, out of information, don't understand the technology, but this system tacks on, or it works with the CAD system, and it pops up the pertinent questions. They, you know, if somebody calls in and says, I have a chest pain, they can key it in, it will throw out the protocol for them to go through the questioning. Um, it also acts as a quality assurance program as well, which it will track what all the calls are, what questions were, so that our medical director can do his quality assurance. Am I correct? Am I speaking right?
Yes. The software works, uh, right now, we're about-
The software works, uh, right now we're working on, we're supposed to work on a set of cards. It's just a computer app, and that makes it easier, um, just to go through your call. Also, there's a quality assurance, uh, package that comes with it. Um, when we go to our medical director meetings, he has to, I have to fully control about 30% of our calls, and then zoom that in. And he goes through, uh, but this, uh, these two systems are the newest thing that's out. Um, all the surrounding counties, I'm, I'm pretty sure all our surrounding counties use it already. A couple of them don't use the quality assurance. Some of them they like it, and some of them don't. But I feel like it really helped ease us into this. Um, I have, all the dispatchers have attended the training, and we're through with that part of it, and now it's time to implement this part and get the software in there ready so we can start.
Okay, Misty, did I hear you right? You're saying you have to use cards? Is there a card?
It's a, it's a set of flip cards. And, um, you just read the questions, and then you decide what kind of call it's going to be. If it's chest pain, if it's trauma call, then you flip to it, and then you start asking the questions later. Um, it's not worked real well for us in the past. We tried to implement that. I shouldn't, maybe not many, 2000, 2101. Um, it's just, it's hard to get it to work with your callers. Um, then we got away from having the training. Everybody that we had at the time had the training, and it just didn't work, so we didn't get the training. Um, now it's one of the requirements from the 911 board to be able to re-sign their funds is to be compliant with this medical dispatch. And it is a good program. Um, and, you know, it's supposed to, to give better information to our ambulances for accurate information, get better information for our callers. Um, so it, it is a good one. Uh, so this is kind of where we're at with implementing it. And the next step will be getting the software and get it to them.
And quality assurance means that it's kind of like an audit? It's an audit situation?
Kind of like an audit. Um, in order to, to use this, you have to have a medical director who's on the business. And he is ultimately in charge of making sure that we are in compliance with the rules for use of that. Just like lawyers permit a company to be compliant with what they do in the ambulance. They have, you know, guidelines of how they, they go into the medications and everything else. We have guidelines about how we answer the questions. If we don't do it correctly, um, you know, there's liability to that, and it's ultimately-
What does your cost mean?
Grand total of $41,222. And then the training is-
Uh, there'll be one more class, um, that heavy-ha care to perform a certain class. And I think about $12,000. Um, should be, it's 100% paid by 911.
No, no.
Um, so, we're right. We're within $40,000.
I know, but it's very difficult for, for some years. I've been in the back lots of times, but not as a patient. And I'd say, whatever you can do to make it better, do it.
Absolutely.
And they done good. I ain't, I ain't saying nothing, but they did. But anything that we can do to help, uh, needs to be done.
Now, this excellent will increase our quality, I think. And help our dispatchers do their jobs more effectively.
And so that's shattered the doubt. We understand how important it is. Because, you know, our E and S services, dispatchers, and everybody together, we know it. Literally the lifeline. I mean, because of the rule edge where we're at, the distances involved, and everything else. And plus, you know, the money's there, and I, I agree with you. You know, that that's right here. And while we're talking about that, we get that new, um, gosh, what do they call it? What's it called?
It's a local map manager.
Yes, yeah, how's that going?
Uh, we've trained on it with four labs. Um, JR and I sit in on training for an entire week. Very simple to use. Um, I love it so far. It's, it's really going to be great. I have a upgrade coming from GM Connect in the next month to my system up there. And when I get that upgraded, then my new computer will be able to publish, um, all the changes and corrections. Right now, it will come straight up on my kept computer. Uh, I really, really like it. I mean, JR, I think, is, is liking it also. Um, it's going to be able, we'll be able to export some information from it.
Look, I was just asking this too, Misty, from the standpoint, if we have the money, is there anything we can do to take that next step with that particular program? Or if there's that that improves it, I mean, to take advantage of it, you know? I don't know. I don't know much about it other than what I saw the brochure and what you posted in there that explained to me.
I think that the export on that is going to be a key layer, and so far, that's, that's worked.
Okay.
It's been a marked first.
Well, I've got a little more to spend, and that is to get some dispatch chairs that are what they call 24-hour chairs. That are much more comfortable and, and better economically. And we can get four new chairs. They're expensive, $909 each. But there can, that's, it would add to their quality of, of life when they're sitting there those eight or 10 or 12 hours that they do at those consoles. So, uh, while we're spending money, they would like to get those chairs as well.
Four.
Four. So we're looking at about $3,800 once we, uh, pay shit.
All 911?
All 911.
What balance does that leave after all this budget you're leaving?
We have about $100,000 left. Um, and we, we closed the year out last year with about $109. So, you know, I, I'm wanting a little bit lower than what we had last year so that I can bump my, um, I'm liking about $12,000 less than last year so I can get that $1,000 back that we, that they took from us. And that really hurts me because this is taxpayer money that our taxpayers are paying on their phone bills that I would be going to the benefit of County. And, uh, we don't want to get any sorry on that, but Tim, you know, that's a part of it. Okay, here's the next one, and this is, once again, um, I'm asking, I'm going to ask you to spend some money. I talked to Mr. Edwards about this a few months ago. And I alluded to this several times, um, that I've never felt like time was right for us to, to economically be able to, to put some software in place for finance. We are operating under Credit Solutions Software, which is basically a software package that is built for CPAs and CPA firms. Yeah, it's a tax, basically an income tax product. It's also a product that you use to do audits and review to compilations. It's a wonderful software package. I love it. Um, integration's wonderful for a CPA and a CPA firm. But it's not built for fund accounting, okay? I spent probably about the last year looking at several different packages, talking to a lot of vendors. And I have actually found what I'm happy with, which is really difficult for me to say I'm happy. Because I am a very nitpicky type person when it comes to accounting software. Before I go into this, I want to tell you, I've already got it paid for. Okay? I've already got it paid for. Because I don't want to have a hard time. Because I, we got to keep Raymond healthy here, in life, with their parts and bills. But what this package is going to do, first of all, it's going to automate the purchase order system, which has always been a bug in my cross since I walked in here four years ago. Um, the way it's going to be set up is that each department manager is going to have access to the system on the county server. The very secure system, each, each family will have access only to their department. They will go in, they can make the requisitions. They will put it in, and I'll get an email, I'll go in, review it. And when that requisition is entered into the system, it automatically encumbers the budget. Okay? It's all real-time. So at any point in time, they can know where they are in their budget, and I can know where they are in their budget, and the county manager can know, okay? And once again, it's all secure. So the only area that they would be able to look at would be their own, or whatever area we decide they need to look at. Because of that, the budget system is real-time. And at any point in time, if Mr. Pollard or Mr. Allen would come in and say, "Where are we in such and such budget?", I can have an answer right there, okay? Now, the way we're setting up now is all pretty much made. Okay, somebody comes in, they bring in their acquisition, I give them the purchase order. And then I have to sit there and manually post everything against the budget, which takes up a lot of my time, okay? Um, so that's the budget, okay? And it will actually help do my projections for us. So that if we say, "What are they going to look like at any point in time?", Mr. Cable and I can go in, and it'll actually do all our projections for us. I spend literally hours and hours and hours doing this, okay? And I have a budget, and I have a complaint. I want to tell you why this is important. Payroll, currently on payroll, we're doing it with ADP. Okay, Michelle goes in, she puts all the hours in, and they process it, and we get the checks, and they do the direct deposit. But it's costing us, costing us $10,000 a year in fees to do that. Basically, all they're doing is taking what she's inputting in and printing the checks, and it's costing the county $10,000 a year. Not ever been happy with that, but under the current structure, we just, the one thing that they do do is the orderly payroll types reporting, okay? But if we had more time in other areas, we could do that ourselves. The other thing, and we can continue to have direct deposit and our payroll checks if that's our desire. The other thing that's really neat about it is that we can set up an employee portal so that if they need a copy of their pay stub at any point in time, they can log in themselves, and they can have that portal and pull that stuff. Whereas the shell is spending a lot of time rebranding pay stubs for people because people don't tend to keep their pay stubs. They can also get online access to their W-2. So where we do a paper W-2, they can go in and print it themselves if that award, or we can print it, and then they can have access if and when they lose their W-2. The part that Kim likes about it is that it's going to track the annual income time and sick time. And right now, we've got an old Excel spreadsheet that's run off of old macro. And the guy that used to keep and maintain that retired, and he doesn't want to do it anymore. And we're in trouble if that spreadsheet goes down. Plus, it takes a lot of her time.
But it's a spreadsheet.
It's a spreadsheet. It's manual. In addition, uh, it will help her to track employees from the time they're hired to their termination. Okay, it'll be a system where she can track, keep track of pay raises, and now going to the file board and I figure out what they make five years ago, what happened. The part that's on the shell, and I mean, I had her look at this software package too, because I mean, I figured if anybody's would not like it, and find something wrong with it, she would. Because, I mean, she's really up on stuff, and, and she's, I depend on her to be my, my second set of eyes, is the retirement reporting. Currently, she has to take the reports that ADP generates. She has to audit those reports. She has to go in, log into Orbit, and do all the retirement reporting. It usually takes her a day to a day and a half to do that once a month. This system will create the file that she will upload to Orbit. So all she'll have to do is kind of do a troubleshoot it and edit it if she needs to, and then upload it straight into Orbit. It, it interfaces with Orbit. The part that I like, of course, is the financial reporting part and the budget part. Um, I will be able to, at any point in time, as I said, go in and print whatever department I need to look at, and I'll be able to shoot it to those departments. Plus, they'll be able to access their own departments as well to know where they are. And I, I really was nitpicky on this. I was like, well, when we did the demo, I was like, do it this way. Do it this way. Do it this way. The current setup we have right now literally took me probably a month's worth of work to set those financial statements up, and I nearly lost my mind doing it. And it's still not what I like. Um, this will allow me the flexibility to set up those reports any way that I need to. It will, um, also is built for fund accounting. So when it comes time to do the audit, I can interface with the auditors, create files to interface. And then it will do what they call it, that famous Gatsby 34 conversion, where we take our fund accounting up to the higher level that LTC requires us to create, uh, which takes days and days and days and days. And I'm not exaggerating for us to do this. What is the intangible benefits? Well, it's going to free your finance officer up from being a glorified bookkeeper to a finance officer, where I can actually be more used to Greg and to you guys in debt management. Um, I can be of better use on fixed asset management, planning. It will give us the time that we've been screening for on EMS billing. And it's just going to make us more efficient overall and enable us to give the citizens better information, you guys better information, to do what we need to do. So if you flip the page, you will see it's expensive. Now, I looked at another package, and I looked at one that would cost about $14,000. And within 15 minutes of the demo, I was ready to hang up and say, "No, this is not it." It's totally counterintuitive. This is an intuitive system. You're looking at software cost of $38,673. Conversion cost, and that's where they'll take our vendor files, all of our master files, and move them into the new system of $927150. They will come onsite with us for seven days for $7,350 to, to actually help us train, to get it set up on all of the log stations. And they will do the project management installation. That's where they'll be testing the system. They'll set it up, they'll test it, we'll audit it, we'll see how it's working. They'll work with Taylor on the IT and help him to get all the stuff done and start up a new system. So you're looking at a total cost of $61,344.50. I nearly died when he gave me the quote. But then I remembered that we've already spent the money on sales tax. We are going to be getting a $53,000 sales tax refund in a few, probably about a month or so. But this is money that we've already spent. We'll get back from the state loan that I can use to fund this. And then what we're going to save annually is about $9,750 bucks. So I can more than pay for it with the money I'm saving on ADP and the money I'm getting back from the state loan. Now, it will cost, on an annual basis, about $8,300 to maintain. That's, that's unlimited support.
But that's an estimate, what we're paying ADP.
Exactly. That what we're paying ADP and go for the support. Um, when I first came here four years ago, and I've never told this board this, I was promised $2,000 more a year in salary I'm taking. And when I saw what shape that the county was in, I said, "No." And I told the manager at that time, "I'd rather take that money and hold it to get a decent software package at some point." And I'm not saying this because I'm crying for a ransom law. I'm happy where I am, but we more than paid for it, I think. And one, one thing I would do, we would need to keep ADP through the end of calendar year just because those kind of conversions are yuck, I mean, when you try to do it mid-year. Um, but I think that the system in time saved and efficiency and effectiveness and the ability for us to be able to be more, more better at strategic, strategic work that we need to be doing, it's well worth it when you consider, and I've got a Cherokee County commissioner sitting here. I talked with your finance officer in Cherokee County, of course, they're a big county, and they need a higher level of software, paid over $127,000 for the, the package that they're on, they've been on for about 10 years. And it works great for them. We don't need that amount of, we don't need to be that sophisticated, but we absolutely need to be more sophisticated than we are. And, um, I hate to throw this at you at this point in the year, but this is honestly the first package I've felt good about. And I feel, and Michelle's felt really good about. And, um, as I said, she's my asset test, and I always pass these things via her. And she's going to be the one in the trenches using it as well. I've talked to some of the department managers. They're really excited about it because they get frustrated with us because we can't get them the reports they need quick enough. And part of, the main reason for that is that we are, are still a manual system as best as we can say we're still a manual system. If we want to do the things that we need to do for this county, we need to be, I need to be free to do big projects, global projects, and let, let Shell do the bookkeeping. And right now, I'm doing way too much bookkeeping. So that's my spiel. And you'll probably never hear me say, "It's been a long time."
Well, you know, I wanna think that, and I totally appreciate what you're saying, and that's the same. And I figured that you got a way to pay it before you came in here. Something to tell me that that's the way that it'd be. And one example that comes to my mind, when I first came up in this position on the board, and started with these folks here, is that Kim told me, you know, just trying to keep up with the paper that was very good, you know, the requisition thing. You don't know what's coming in, and you don't know what's going out, then you find yourself in a bind. So, you know, sometimes you drag people kicking and screaming, and people are a little bit weary of technology and things such as that. But I can understand it. And if you're saying, you know, that this is going to do what it can do, then we can see that. Because two years this board has been together, I've been with some of these for two years on this board, and we've so ached about wanting to do some, as you call it, global project. And then able to go in, and what it boils down to is the ability to be able to jet revenues and go and start doing these things. And we finally got to the place, just by the nature of what we inherited when we came in, and I'm not whining or crying, we just deal with it. But right now, we're at a point, at a juncture, where we can actually start taking these steps forward with it. And I would see this as being part of it, so, you know...
And I like the part about the human resource snapshot, you call it. That's the great asset review as well.
Right, right.
Yes. I would like to say, I mean, as far as the software is concerned, and Becky will tell you this, I always ask, "What are we at? How can we figure out a way where I can view what you're viewing in the budget?" You know, because, like she said, she has to go in there, she takes the PO, she codes it hours, and then it gets up there, and then, you know, it's not real time.
Right.
And this would allow us the ability to real-time management the departments within the county.
Will lovely commission access?
Absolutely. And, you know, that's one thing that's been mine, is I'm gonna be more valuable in life. I always try to make my salary every day, and most of the time I do, or every week, every year. But, you know, I'm gonna be more valuable with them. And I can't do it when I'm buried in Cody Hills and posting it here. And, you know, we're posting things two and three times just because we don't have the tools that we need to be effective.
But that starts from, I mean, when you're on, to check?
No, we can still do payroll checks, just like cut checks, just like we always have, or do the direct deposit. Or we, it will also have a capability, if we wanted to start paying our vendors electronically, which a lot of them are, you know, wanting to do that, and give us that capability to do that. And then one more thing is, like last week, we got a head of records request. They wanted financial data for the last five years. And I had to call them, because they had this tallest detail of all this stuff. And I had, and it was embarrassing to me. I had to call in and say, "Look, this is what I can give you. The rest is manual, and if you want the manual, I'm glad to host you if you can come in, because we only have two on staff here, and we can't do it." And he was very understanding, but it would've been so nice just to be able to give them the information that they wanted within a few minutes. And, um, it's just, we are now in the era where people are asking for major detail, and we can no longer afford not to have that major detail. And that's all I have.
Can you do projection models then?
Um, well, we can do budget projection. I haven't played with it to that degree yet, but I'm thinking that it's gonna give us the capability to do it. At least it's gonna give us the data we're ready to come and build the models. We'll have the time to build the models, that's the thing.
All right, good. Any other questions or comments for Becky? Ms. Clerk, if you will please guide us through. We're gonna go ahead and take care of these action items. With these, I appreciate the highlights, and I imagine that, once this is rolling, if the board decides to go with this package, that our highlights will probably come to the map. And, uh, we'll do that way. All right, folks, so we'll go ahead. The first that I have here, uh, this clerk is the authorization of the federal drug tax bank account.
For the Sheriff's Department.
For the Sheriff's Department. This was explained by the finance officer. It's a, to open this account for federal drug monies that are approved by the Sheriff's Department. We have a motion that this, this federal account be opened.
Opened.
Have a motion. Is there any further discussion? All approved. Next, this clerk I have is this for possible shift of funds of North Carolina Capital Management Trust for better interest rates, point one percent to point one-four percent. Is that something we wanna act on tonight, or you all wanna go ahead and read this material with more material?
I'm good with it. Becky recommends to do it.
I have one question about it. It's a risk in the bank, and it's a risk here.
It's a risk.
So we're talking about an increase in the interest rate for bringing interest on to people's money.
About two thousand dollars a year, probably. It's not a lot, but it is a risk.
But then it might approve.
And it burdens me from a stewardship capacity. If I don't know when I go to bed at night that I'm getting, I've got it safe, in the safest place I can have, but also getting the good rate. I worry about stuff like that.
All right, first, does the board wanna entertain this tonight?
Okay.
All right, so if I have a motion, that we go ahead and, okay, for the investment in North Carolina Capital Management Trust, is that, am I saying that right? Okay, and that amount, you said a five, five hundred thousand to start with. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, so we have a second. Any discussion or questions regarding, all pros, sign if you put it hand, all opposed, white sign. Okay? This clerk, next thing I have is the Sheriff's Department's request for computers in the amount of three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Have a motion. Have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any question or discussion? All pros, sign if you put it hand, all opposed, white sign. Motion carries. All right, at this time, we have a motion for the nine-one-one expenditures for the year end. Uh, it's presented in the, uh, in the software that was presented, what is it called?
Mark.
Yeah, priority dispatch, priority dispatch.
Motion.
And also the chairs.
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion for both items. Have a second? I have a second. Any further discussion or question? All pros, sign if you put it hand, all opposed, white sign.
Finance software.
Okay, and the finance software. And it's just been explained by our finance officer, the benefits of the county, uh, in having this. We have a motion?
No.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second. Any discussion or questions? All pros, sign if you put it hand, all opposed, white sign. All right, thank you very much. Ms. Clerk, did we get all of it covered?
Yes, we did.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to recognize Lieutenant Miller and Reverend Williams for Travel and Tourism.
Kim, I'm hoping you'll give us a little guidance here too as to... I think what we're looking for is to go forward with a letter of support so we can there in turn, um, get a letter of intent to Pam. But again, I need to kind of know how to accomplish this, please.
I'll need a motion, or a motion to do a letter of support allowing them to use property down there toward, and then going forward with requests from the bank, asking them for the property, use of the property. That would be on long-term lease, is my understanding.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. And we would ask for maybe fifty years instead of thirty.
I would like fifty.
That was recommended.
Fifty, yeah.
Let me know if I want to do you.
They just made a motion to give a letter of support.
So you know, no technology, you might be there.
One, one.
For Travel and Tourism, they want to use the property that's beside United Community Bank to build a welcome center. And they will use the property that Grand County owns, which will make a motion to allow the use of that property to be used for picnic tables and parking that will be beside the center. The only reason that the bank does not want to sell the property is in the event that future boards, um, try to dissolve the Travel and Tourism, then they would not have anybody responsible for the payback.
And there would be a bunch of business.
Worry what kind of business would go back into that building.
But we can inquire if that would be a request.
Yeah, so we would like that inquiry.
If we're not, just get out of a situation like that.
Well, at least, at the least I would.
You know, can, put the county's stuff on somebody.
Where we're not paying rent this time, for fifty years.
This would be, I imagine, on a term, you know, maybe a dollar a year. I imagine that's the way it'd be worth for this thing.
It's not been discussed, but it did never sound like there was a monetary way to it, even though I'm sure a dollar a year is gonna be something there.
I think, Ram, this was spoken in the workshop session, is that property right there, you know, in the bank. Yeah, and that they'd be able to do this. And the finance side of it, and again, with the local government commission, and our, uh, our finance officer is the ex-facile finance officer for, for Y'all, Travel and Tourism. And in that, you understand that it was brought up by Mr. Difmore, uh, you know, is that those monies that are there in the occupancy tax would stand good toward the payment on the building. And then, the indemnification of the county to be able to go and say, "Yes, that will be paid." But at the same token, the occupancy tax will be held. And, you know, this board is wanting so much just to work with Travel and Tourism. And I understand that that Travel and Tourism money is not something that a, that a board of commissioners in Grand County has any business dealing with. And I've said that, and I believe that, and I believe that, you know, for an independent board, that still, that money on the occupancy, occupancy tax will be there to cover the expense of that building. So that's, that's where we're at with it. But if you're, she's asking us for a motion, then we have to...
She's looking for just a letter of support for them to move forward and explore getting it.
Whatever we can with United Community.
Right, and I will make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion?
Okay.
Can I say one more? Okay, I will, we're seeing one.
Let me, let me ask one question before we go on there. Look, looking long for the future, we'll all be gone for fifty years. How the tour revenue probably would, would still be good.
I hope so.
We hope. But would there, and the lease that the bank gives us, we should put in our, we should have the option to renew to every year at that time.
I think that would be a good recommendation.
To renew or buy?
Exactly.
Renew or buy. We're none but a bigger, the younger one might, somebody will be responsible for it.
Okay, we have a, uh, we send in motion. Can we have a motion that we have, or do you want that in the form of a letter of support?
Yes, please.
And this will be a resolution?
It would just be a letter of support.
Letter of support. Okay, we have a motion, Commissioner Williams. We have, Commissioner Allen with a second. Is there any further discussion or questions about this? All pros, signify if you put it hand, all opposed, white sign.
Thank you, county commissioners, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, we'll need to, um, make a motion that Travel and Tourism will have the use of the property. And I apologize, I don't have the exact, um, boundaries that I would give that, that they have the use of property, so that going forward.
All right, and I wanna be cautious with this myself, is that a contingent upon this happening?
Yes.
All right, contingent on this happening, and even to the point, uh, you know, if there's a way, and this is just to entertain something for the board to think about, is that if it could be a possible part of collateral, agreement or something, for a loan or whatever, uh, because that piece of property is just sitting there, and besides, you know, again, being an eyesore, you know, if it could be something productive for people of the county, then we need to go ahead and have it be a part of this total project. But we have to make sure that, once that's transferred, who is it transferred to? Is it transferred to Community Bank?
Travel and Tourism.
Travel and Tourism will hold that, so that, that still keeps it in the bank. So, in that, can we have a motion to the effect, then, contingent on the, uh, the process of getting a building and a property lease, that we, uh, have them to use that piece of property for parking or whatever uses they have?
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions or comments, discussion? All pros, signify if you put it hand, all opposed, white sign. Okay, I think I take care of the two matters.
When they're considering, do you want to discuss any of the, or do you want to get with me on a separate time about the increase in occupancy tax?
I'd like to ask our county manager to do some homework on that, if you wouldn't mind.
I know what you're talking about, Tab.
It's, um, that you cannot go higher than six percent.
You're going above it.
Right. Currently, we're at three, we would be going to six, and then anybody, i.e. the municipality of Fontana down, they're already at six, so they cannot contribute to our budget because they're already at six. Does that make sense?
They still have the base, the three of them.
Yes.
That's still municipality, but it goes straight to Travel and Tourism.
The way it comes to you.
Right.
You see, that's one thing, Tab, that I've never understood, is how we can have a three percent sitting there, and there seems to be some kind of whatever about not saying, let's just go ahead and add that three percent onto the, onto the occupancy tax.
Well, that three percent is the occupancy tax.
Yes, it is, but it's bad.
From the three percent.
There seems to be some negative something to the other about that.
Well, it shouldn't be. I think it's just a misunderstanding from a lot of people in the public that they think it's gonna be to the citizens, it's just what the tourists are going to pay when they come in here. Instead of...
Well, my family comes to town and they need extra room.
It's gonna be three percent more than the three percent they already pay for a total of six percent.
The only pullback was from some of the hoteliers, and I think there are more to pick it up now.
Okay.
Because local citizens do not pay that much. They don't spend the money in general.
For all that's involved in us raising that occupancy tax raise?
Legislation.
That's something.
Legislation.
And raw request.
Is it not? I thought we could sit.
I don't think the occupancy tax is. I think the restaurant tax would be, but the occupancy tax would not be.
They granted us six percent.
Six percent.
We've only enacted three of it.
By legislation, we're guaranteed, we're, we can allow six, but the county's only up to the three.
They're only up to the thirties.
The county should retire the right of the building.
Right, up to the cities, right.
That's, that's my understanding. They've allowed us up to six percent, we're only using three.
We raised ours one percent. Ours was three, but we raised it one percent not to hurt the restaurant and the motels. And it's working, it's working real good.
Really? It shouldn't hurt anybody, so.
It ain't, it ain't, that's what I'm saying. We just don't wanna keep the people from coming. We don't wanna get it too high, because we've had some people come in, you know, was complaining about the occupancy. So, we decided to raise it one percent, and it seems it ain't hurting them that much. Your terrorism that's coming in.
Right.
So, I, myself, I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to raise the occupancy tax from three percent to six. Do we have a second?
I don't, I don't think I could say that, because I said on that board. Check it, I'll check.
We have a second. All right, is there any further discussion?
The only question that I have, is there a window where we could raise it or not raise it? Was there a timeframe?
No, the name...
Wait, what was in the beginning?
Yeah, I believe the name on that legislation didn't say six percent. I just, I wanna clarify something, but this is my understanding, which is very... I wish I could get a very appeal from this. Um, if you have a municipality like Fontana, that adds to the six percent. We would not tack only additional six, three percent to theirs.
That is correct.
The max that they will assess will be six percent. Three percent will go to their, they have their own Travel and Tourism. And the three percent would still come to Grand County. I just wanna clarify that. And then, uh, if the town of Robbinsville were to enact their deal, and get a three percent, then we would not do that in, in any town we're in it. We're set at that six percent, and that's the way I understand it. I just wanna clarify that.
You see, that's what I understood, this was a maximum, so we're not gonna be stepping on people's toes. We're not.
But as far as for budget projections, and this is one thing I wanna clarify, is that if we go to, since the town of Robbinsville does not have three percent right now in votes, yet. So if we enact six, we're gonna make it up to six, but if they enact three, we're gonna lose.
Yes.
For those lots of their places in town, we'll lose that three percent. So you can do your projections now on what six percent's gonna do for in town, well, you could actually lose half of that in the year if they decide to enact three percent. But, Taff, correct me if I'm wrong, all of this goes to the same place?
But they could have their own authority.
That's right.
I think that towns have to go to the general assembly to get their own, and then they can create their own TNT authority, which, you know, that needs to be, I think, some discussion between the, all the powers that be, get that at her. Now, I think I need to go visit with the town, and hopefully they will keep me as their representative as travel and tourism, because I hope, if they're watching the meetings online, that I'm doing a good job for the county.
Well, you know, and two, Taff, the point is, is that they have the right to do that by legislation, and there's no way in the world we require anybody doing that, I mean, we have the power to do that. And if that's something they decide to do later, I mean, that's it. That's their right, we're gonna respect it. But, you know, if I have to just stay out there and not be able to pass that three hit, it doesn't make sense. So we'll find out what the other shoe says. We have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, we have, right, Commissioner, we have sent a motion, Commissioner, I will rescind it.
Okay, any further discussion? All of those signify that you put in hand, all of those like a sign. And then, what, from a budget to what to what?
The three to six percent, we are estimating a hundred and forty is our current budget, and we're estimating two hundred and ten thousand.
Okay, and, and that will help toward the funding for the?
The building and the decoration, the interior design, a full-time hostess, the increase of printed magazines and other printed campaigns, and then the technology with smartphone applications, interactive maps and whatnot.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anything else?
I've had several complaints on the charges for the leaders coming for the Fourth of July.
Okay, that is Teresa Garland with the town of Robbinsville.
Heritage Festival.
I'm a member of the Heritage Festival.
Okay.
And if they would like to come before the committee we're meeting every two weeks right now, on Thursday at the Ingram House, we would be more than welcome to listen to each individual and get somebody that's having a difficult time or whatnot.
Did you hear the commissioner from Cherokee County's comments already?
I did.
Okay, I just wanted to say that might be a topic for discussion, if possible.
And I'll give him Teresa Garland's telephone number.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, the, what was I gonna say?
I call it sometimers' disease. Sometimes I remember and sometimes I don't.
Oh, I went complaints on the street dance.
The street dance right now, my board did not choose to fund it, I am seeking private donations to try and get the street dances funded.
Board, do you?
They did not feel that it put heads in the beds, it was more of a local event, and the purpose of travel and tourism is to gain the out-of-town traveler.
Now, I meant to, and motorcycles.
And that's a viewpoint of part of the board and the other part of the board, and it is a long-term goal that we're putting behind Heritage Festival and the music on the square, and a one-on-one battle, and the other battle I did not win so well, so. I'll take them as I go, and I'll keep trying to educate and push forward, but I'm really trying to get that publicly funded with donations. It's not off my calendar yet.
Well, they think the board, they asked that we fund the whole thing, so we, we do have to operate within our budgets and the monies that we gather from taxes. And, and in order to get those taxes, we have to have people renting rooms. So we just suggested that perhaps they could go to different area businesses and let those businesses sponsor the dances for night, and that way, that business would get some publicity and, you know, do some good public relations work there. So we would be willing to help some, but as it was put to us, they wanted us to fund the whole thing. And I think that's been the case in the past, yes?
I think they've funded all of it in the past, but I know last year it was a pretty tedious point in the budget and the asking process.
Like I say, I mean, we would, you know, we could do it a bunch of times, I mean, we could come over and, you know, do it a couple times for free, and maybe, you know, just pass the hat for the people that come from Cherokee and Ashville, my band, you know, if it would help, you know.
A lot of my quadgers too, at McDonald's in the morning, have mentioned that we need to start charging per head. I think Bryson City charges seven dollars per head, that way that you've got the funds for the following year, but I'm one of those that if it's your family outing, you're kind of, you know, your budget is low anyway, I'm not really sure if that's gonna be a big help either, right? I do feel like there's families that are proud of Heritage, and I do feel like there's businesses that five hundred and fifty dollars a dance, we might not get all twelve, but I do think that we should be able to at least get half, and then I'm gonna go back to my board to see if they might do the other half.
Okay.
I think that's good.
All right, well, that's good. Well, I'm glad we have enacted, enacted board, and things are clicking along.
That's great.
I really do appreciate it. Anything else for, just my, like, may need to keep things clicking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, board.
All right, thank you very, very much. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Juanita Culver, who is an extension of contract project manager and architect fees.
Fire with me. It's hours, I'm sick. You've got what, proposals from the architect and project manager. I have put in for admission, nine five thousand dollars, one hundred percent, still in this much, I'm actually, she arrived, complete the financing, and several of the others that, that will extend the contract to the architect and the project manager. I have around five thousand dollars left in contingents and funds to pay this fifteen thousand, three hundred dollars, and a state capital grant that's paid one hundred percent. I have the other monies, the ten thousand, three hundred, and operating reserve, that I can utilize to finish paying these two contracts for then additional three months. I need your approval to do that.
And this is pretty much just to spend the money?
Yes.
At which you've got ninety-five thousand more?
I've got ninety-five thousand more dollars, one hundred percent, yes.
Are you?
And I've got five thousand in a state capital grant, but the other nine, ten thousand, three hundred is gonna come out of county funds, that I have an operating reserve to pay for the project manager and the architect. I'm afraid you misunderstood, what I was telling you, the ninety-five thousand, three hundred, five thousand is paid at one percent, but I need ten thousand, three hundred to pay those to, for the extension of the time of the monies that'll be spent over the next three months.
Okay, does that make sense? Okay, let's go, will we act comments now? You will pick that up or act on that?
It's not on there, they have a snapper out, they say, we can move it.
Okay, all right, so we'll do it. All right, at this time, okay, I have a motion to the extension of contract project manager and architect fees. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion, questions? All of those signify that you put in hand, all of those like a sign. Okay, thank you, Juanita.
Thank you.
Go better.
I'm tired.
I'm at your work, you're standing there. You're gonna go let go of it.
I didn't deserve that. I've been on the phone trying to get my issue out.
Okay, all right, we had Alicia Farm here during our workshop session to speak to us about electronic medical records, and the presentation that she made to us was that with the issue of us having to go in this direction, and I'd like to talk to our finance officer about it, and we had some discussion about it, but you know, the plan that was presented to us, and this question, may I, rest of the board, please. Where would you want to do that, right here? You've worked with Alicia on this, spoke to her about this, this is she right here, board we looked at on the projections for this, and, and the ability to use this, this is kind of like the, you know, the finance software, this is the health department software that helps them speed up the cash flow that comes in through their reimbursement on Medicaid and other funds of money. And as this is broken down, can you explain it to us again, that, to be, this, this is Alicia here, there she is. I thought you'd gone to a birthday party, I saw you. Oh, you did, you're back already? I apologize, come up here. I apologize, I thought you were going to a nine, nine-year-old birthday.
What is the question?
Well, again, about the way this payment works for the next five years?
Yes, sir.
All right. You went through and said to us that it was the incentive plans are now available, and this needs to be acted on by October one.
We have to have it one hundred percent in operation by October one.
By October one.
You know, be phases, I mean, you'll start out with like a billing phase or a registration phase, and then you'll go to, you know, another phase, which could be clinical, and there'll be about three phases to it.
Okay.
And they'll come in, open up, you know, roll out one phase, might you work on there for like three, three weeks or so, and they'll come in and roll out another phase, and then that way it doesn't just totally bog down your system once and you can't serve the clients.
Okay.
If it's twenty-one, five, they'll be available for the first year, right?
Yes.
And that is right now?
Twenty-one thousand, two hundred fifty per.
All right, and that's times three.
Times three.
And then, as I see it, year two, three, four, five, then it drops down to those, there's still that incentive money over the five years, but it's greatly reduced?
Right.
Okay.
And this, you know, year one is literally year one we're in it.
Right.
And if we wait, you know, and I wish I knew the dates, I wish somebody could give me the dates, but I'm assuming it's probably that October deadline. If we wait, and we don't have it at a hundred percent in operation by that deadline, then that year one money of sixty-three thousand, seven hundred fifty's gone.
Right.
So then you roll into year two, and you just get the four year.
Right.
Right.
And this is something, I mean, that's gonna come, I mean, it has to be in place.
It is gonna come, you know, we can, we still have time to, we've got another company that's talking to us too, so we still got time to make sure we're getting the best deal. But we would like to make sure that, you know, this is far as what money we're gonna get, this is the money we're gonna get. So the only thing that would change is the figures there where it says payments to Patagonia Health, it may be payments to another one, but I wanna make sure, no matter what we do, that it integrates with the state system, we don't have problems with it, and that it's definitely what's gonna be able to bill Medicaid, which is our biggest revenue. And be, you know, that will automatically not have any glitches, so that's why I'm gonna be working with the counties and other counties that have, that's what, this is the program that seems to be the most popular with the county health departments, to be able to integrate to the state system.
And it will do everything you want it to, or do it.
But what they've demonstrated to us so far, and we, you know, again, this morning, is to make sure, we called the other can, some of the other counties, and talked with people that said they're ready to make us do nothing but praise, how, how much is the saving now, especially with time and the nurses.
And you said something about dealing with it?
We're gonna have to, this, they did not do the, no program that I have found, and that's one of the things I've kind of been holding out on, I'd like to find something that, that did it all, but no, none of them do both. We either do either have medical or dental, but you know, public health's probably a little bit of a savings, and most of the time you don't have the integration of the two programs under one roof. But we are, I mean, dental's another one, we're gonna continue to bill Medicaid, which is, you know, seventy percent of your clientele through the dental office, we're gonna have to get a system for that, but.
And you said that HIS can only go in mail three times a week?
A month.
A month.
It only goes out three times a month, and sometimes it's just two times a month. And a lot of times, you know, even then, your system locks down and you may miss it that way, and it may be another, you know, week or two weeks before you get it to go out again.
Because their system goes down, you're minimalized to have the weight, do you imply for me?
What's, it's your system that you've chosen to use.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you have any?
This is our five-year projection, of course, you know, it's like we haven't moved forward in that thing.
And, you know, another thing is, as Alicia looked at earlier in her presentation, you know, as, as the healthcare in Red County is developed beyond what it is right now, we have a platform that we can operate from to, to build a home, because you obviously, you know, one of our goals, Alicia and I have discussed it, is, is the expansion of healthcare in Red County. To have a system in place that we can build on, you know, for basically over five years for costing twenty-seven thousand dollars, you know, as part of the operating. We can't do it on the system that the state has.
No. And this company, where the state system's gonna be the state system, this company, if we decide to open up our own plant that we've been talking about, whatever platform we want to open it up of, they're gonna work with us to set it up to that. They're gonna be right there, they're wonderful, and that's whatever county that's using them so far says, that they're right there, they know you by name when you call them, and they fix what problem you have. There are a couple, making counties looking at it, Cherokee County, which I talked to state, they're looking at it, a couple of the counties in the west are looking at it too, so. I think it would be credit for us to move on the money that they pay for, rather than putting it on the taxpayer.
Plus the benefit, that's the, you know, the Hilltop, you know, it's still, I understand you're moving it, how, how's that working, the Hilltop thing?
It's going really good. We're, the numbers are back down a little bit, which we're thankful, means flu season's about over, but we're still seeing above what we projected at the twelve, we're not up still at the twenty-one, twenty-two, and they're turning them away, but we're still above the twelve that was the normal projection, what the grants would go for, so.
And, and still, I heard in this, you know, open forum, is it looking to maybe have that as a nonprofit somewhere in that way, or what's some of the other idea for that?
What, what I vision, and Greg's been out there with me on this, and we, you know, we meet, I meet quarterly with Steve Heatherly, with Silver Branch of West Care there, and also I've talked with the clinic up here in there, trying to get me a setup, set up the top of mission and several other things, but, you know, the vision is to, to pull the three clinic out of the health department, make it its own nonprofit, build off of that nonprofit into another clinic called, you know, a clinic where we can service everybody, or leave it in the health department and try to go to open access for everything that we offer to the health department, and have a provider there all the time. At that point in time, we, you know, we can, we have a provider there, we can service the county, we can service the jail, you know, we can, during hours, of course, we can service family, so there's still, there's lots of options out there. It's a slow process, we know that by how much it took Hilltop a dozen times.
Right.
But we seem to have a lot of supporters that have funding right now, so. Kristen and I are.